Friday night of this past week, a lot of yous knew Mike Stewart, who passed suddenly. And I'd like to offer a moment of silence for him and anybody else in the audience who knows somebody in the community that we should do the same for. Okay, thank you. We have a public hearing today for replacement, repeal and replace the dog control local law of seven for this year. I will read it to you, seventy seven dash four G. All dogs on off premises of their owners shall be on a leash not more than six feet long, and dogs shall be kept at least thirty feet away from children's playgrounds. Dog owners are instructed to properly clean up after their dogs and properly disposing of waste when a dog is off the owner's property. I will read seven, the local law eight, repeal of seventy seven five B and seventy seven five C, having strong evidence in their entirety. For seventy seven dash five B, for a conviction of a second offense within a period of eighteen months, the conviction date of the first offense, such person shall be punished by a fine of not less than fifty dollars and not more than two hundred. However, in the event of a second offense within a period of eighteen months in which knowledge by this, the owner has proven, such person shall be punished by a fine of not less than a hundred dollars and not more than three hundred. Seventy seven five dash, seventy seven dash five C, for a conviction of a third or subsequent offense, all of which were committed within a period of thirty-six months of the conviction date of the first offense, such person shall be punished by a fine of not less than a hundred and not more than three hundred. However, in the event of a third or subsequent offense in which knowledge by the owner has proven, all of which were committed within a period of thirty-six months, such person shall be punished by a fine of not less than one hundred and fifty and not more than four hundred.
Can you open, open up?
I would like to take a motion to open a public hearing for this.
I'll make the motion to open that public hearing.
Moved by Tony?
I'll second.
Seconded by Chuck, that I would assume, unless the attorney corrects me, that because they're both in seventy seven, chapter seventy seven, we don't need two separate motions? Or should we?
You should have a separate motion.
Okay, so that, the first motion was seventy seven dash four G. I will now take a motion for seventy seven dash five B and C, which was the second one that I read.
I will also make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Adseth.
I'll second.
Mr. Trillion, all in favor? And at this time, if anybody has any comments on the new proposed law, you can speak now and for the time being, we'll keep that public, public hearing open. We have on the agenda, Mr. Scott Fitzgerald from Solar on Earth, and I'm going to yield the floor to him.
Stand over here, she guys, I'm sitting. I appreciate everybody coming in here tonight, what I'm here for. So, Solar on Earth partners with the solar developers that build these fields of solar panels that run and regulate through the Nicerta Clean Energy Program that New York State has. Basically, long story short, eight years ago, New York State passed legislation on this, it's part of their carbon free go green idea, it's known as the New York Sun Program, also known as Community Solar. What it does is, New York State has these solar fields built, and the developers take those solar fields, place them into the Clean Energy Program, which allows them to receive a dollar credit. These dollar credits are paid for by, in your case, paying National Grid through a line item called an SBC charge. If you look at the definition of that in your National Grid though, it actually stands for system benefit charge, which actually funds any clean energy program that's conducted by the state. For example, things like LED lighting, heat pumps, rebates back on EV vehicles, if you've ever seen any upgrades made to streetlights. Long story short, the program is free. It doesn't cost anything to enroll in the program. You're already funding it whether you do or don't. It doesn't require you to place any solar panels on your property, so obviously, we're not here to look for any of your property in the town, excuse me, village. What it is, is the developers have solar fields that are already built, and they take your meters, place them onto a solar array, and they take the dollar credits that are produced from there, and they place them directly onto your National Grid bills, reducing what you owe National Grid every single month. So, no cost of program. You're gonna fund it whether you do or don't do the program, excuse me. You don't have to install any solar panels. The program does require you to sign up for it because obviously, each solar array generates X amount of dollar credits each month, and they're not gonna give away any more than that's generated out of it. Sorry, sidetracked real quick. But yes, it's run by Nicerta, which is New York State. It's just part of their Clean Energy Program. Obviously, anybody's potentially eligible for it, but let's get you, you have to sign up for it. Our company partners with the developers to make sure you're aware of it, help you navigate to get to sign up for it and get you into the program, so you're not just sitting around on it. But yeah, since Nicerta runs and regulates it, the state governs. These developers are all the same, meaning that they all run by the same rules governed by the state. So it's not like one developer offers anymore. The dollar credits actually come off of both your delivery and your supply end. It's not requiring you to change any meters, it's not changing your supplier, it's just a fine dollar credit, essentially by signing up. Your sign up goes to the developers, who then validate you as a National Grid, Nicerta or else you have the state. From there, once you're validated and accepted into the program, the developers provide, in your case, National Grid with a list of who and what meters have been allocated onto that state or on that farm. Once they do that, National Grid does meter reads, then they come back to their office, they place a dollar credit in the miscellaneous section of their bill, just reducing your bill every month. That dollar credit can vary from anywhere from five to 10 percent, it's based on meter classifications. Typically, your large, high demand meters only get a 5 percent credit on the bill, and your smaller meters, residential, small, commercial, fast type of demand meters, will get a 10 percent savings.
Go. So, this is kind of like class action suit reversed, the money's on the table, and we've got to sign up, or it goes into the pot and there's others to get it, and we don't?
Correct.
But, listen, how does that stabilize at five or 10 percent? I would assume the more you sign up, the less there is for everybody.
Well, each farm, so each, because they're not farms, I'm sorry, I apologize. Each solar field has some sort of, they know what they're gonna do. Usually, a solar field is a 60/40, 60 percent residential meters, 40 percent commercial meters. There are some solar fields out there that get what they call mush type accounts, municipalities, universities, schools and hospitals, mean that when a solar field is built, that they, the developers place specific meter classes on it, or else, they don't get the dollar credits from the Nicerta program. So if they don't place the right meter classes onto these solar arrays, they don't receive anything until, it would be, it wouldn't be cost effective for them to give you a dollar credit. So obviously, they had, on these solar fields, they're told that they know which dollar credit, or which meters they need to receive the dollar credit. Once again, National Grid already buys the power from them. National Grid's not a producer, they just buy power, just like any other group. So they buy the power ties directly into their lines. Now, because the state has a Clean Energy Program, this allows the solar developers to get what I call bonus money on top of it. But to get that bonus money from the state, they know that they have to place certain meter classes on, and they know they have to give something back to the community at the same people, or at the same time. So by signing up, let's say, they get an extra five cents for every clean energy kilowatt they produce. Out of that five cents, they know they have to give you a 5 or 10 percent savings off of everything, so it costs them one to two pennies. But, if they were getting five cents from grid per kilowatt, and you take the extra five cents from the state, cost them one or two pennies to give to meters associated with the solar field, they still made an additional three cents per kilowatt. So it's a, it's just, it's a money circle is what it is. It's we, as consumers of power, feed that to National Grid, National Grid takes that line item, feeds it off to Nicerta, and then Nicerta has this program, so the developer utilizes their field and the program to get the bonus dollars, and until for them, for you allowing the developers to use your meters, they give you what I call a coupon, is essentially what it is. So that coupon is basically, it's like going in, and every month, National Grid says, alright, well, you're allocated onto this solar array, you have the solar program, here's your dollar credit off. It doesn't cost anything to do this, you're gonna fund it. You've been funding this for eight years now, and when I walk out of here, you gotta continue to fund the program, whether you do the program or don't. This is just a way to say, hey, you know what? I wanna be able to put and save money, I wanna put money back into the budget, I also wanna be able to save the taxpayers some money also, so here's how we can do it, is by utilizing this program. Kind of like, I'm sure this village has actually used other than Nicerta programs, hence like streetlights typically what one of the most common are. I'm sure you use Nicerta also, maybe if you've ever upgraded furnaces in your buildings. We do it a lot of times at home, without even thinking about it mentally. If you've ever put energy efficient windows in, maybe you've ever changed your furnace out, whoever's come and done that kind of stuff has gotten you what's called a rebate. It's essentially the same exact thing. You have funded it, they're just rebating it on the back end, is what it is, the person who installs them in sense. Questions?
The town signed up last month, correct?
Correct.
So, I guess, my thought would be, if the board agrees, that you would leave the paperwork for us to?
Yep, what I will do for you is, obviously, I knew what the town's meters looked like prior to everything, so obviously, different paperwork for different things. So what I will do is, if you could email me over your National Grid bills, I'll be able to actually look at them, figure out which paperwork to send you. So that way, I'm placing you in the correct thing. It also gives us a chance to say to our developers, hey, this is what we have coming through potentially. Are you gonna have a spot on them, or do we put them somewhere else? It kind of gets things moving, so obviously, taking a look at your National Grid stuff will allow us to give you the correct paperwork to fill out, which will begin this process.
Okay. Does anybody, I don't have, I think that's a good issue, so we forward to, to the developer, paperwork, that one you can give him that he needs to move forward with us, so he can tell us what we want and how to pursue it. Okay, would you? Thank you.
I appreciate it. I'm heading up to town now, for the town board meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone. If anybody has any questions, oh, here, you know what, I'm just gonna leave some on the day where we're working.
I think I already gave you my.
Yeah, and I might leave some for anybody. If anybody has any questions regarding anything, please feel free to reach out. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, at this point in time, privilege of the floor for anybody who wishes to make a public comment, and if you do, please ready to state your name, and we will let you speak.
Oh, what's this?
I'll be down. Who was the floor?
I think my other evening.
Well, I have more of a question. It's not really a public comment, it's a question. Paul and I had this conversation about this geothermal heating system that Dr. Lindecker is putting into his mother's house and his home, and after checking with codes, there's nothing that codes have in the village of Wildville, or in the county, I think, as far as I know. To cover this drilling that's been done anywhere from 100 to 400 foot, depending on the system. He's putting in a, not a lateral system, but the drilling system, and it's right behind Paul Little's property and mine. And I was just wondering, what the village is, have they been looking at any kind of village laws or amendments to what we have about solar panels to include this? Or anything about what may infringe on the village, like Frogen is dealing with now with this high pressure storage that they're dealing with? I guess, that's what my question is.
Do you know, Mr. Burrow, of any type law out there, in other communities, that we may be able to take a look at?
Not that I've ever seen, actually, Cassandra Bill sent me, and I forwarded to Paul, actually. That's as far as we got with it, but a local law or law from another municipality that had some regulation on geothermal. We haven't got any farther on it, but yes, we are looking into it. And that's one of the things we want to establish in the village, you know, this kind of caught us off guard, but.
Yeah. Because the follow-up of my question is that, obviously, there's gotta be some vibration into the ground while they're drilling that deep. And I know how, I have some new critters in my backyard that I never had before, from the drilling, that have come to visit me now. And I'm just wondering, you know, if we find an effect to our foundations or anything. Our barrage is, both our barrages are right within 100 feet of where he's drilling.
Are they still drilling there now? Are they still drilling?
No.
They're digging now, they've drilled the holes, got the tubing in, and they're working on laying the lines into the houses now.
Have you seen any evidence of damage to any of your foundation, or?
Not yet, I haven't, I haven't seen.
I mean, if they're done drilling, the vibration certainly shouldn't stop, or should've stopped by now, right? I'm just curious.
We'll see, because our barrages are the closest, closest to where they're drilling, to see if there's any effect on the foundations of our barrages.
Right.
That's, that's probably what I would see the first.
Do we have, do you think, an answer by, I think this has got to be kind of fast-tracked by the next meeting?
Well, we can have a couple of examples, I don't know if we have the answers.
Right, no, that's what I mean.
He took us off guard.
Yeah.
You know, I went to USPO, and I said he was gonna do it. I went through the code book, and there's nothing.
Paul did go look at it ahead of time.
We couldn't really stop them. I don't see, in my opinion, I don't see a lot of people doing that in the village.
No.
Because of the cost, the cost is outrageous, but we're gonna work at it. I mean, we were caught off, caught off guard with it, never seen it before, so.
Nobody thought this, you know, I get it.
Yeah, if we do do it, I mean, it's probably gonna be a generic law that we pick up from somewhere else.
Right.
Whether it's gonna fit in the end, you know what I mean, for everybody, I don't know. I think it's so new, especially in a village setting, I mean, I've experienced it out in the rural areas before, where they do the ladder, or the horizontal runs, you know what I mean? They just dig a hole, but it takes up a lot of space, where in the village, you don't have that.
I'm gonna have to think there's gonna be some kind of permitting or inspections where they're drilling to.
There would be if we had to end the law, but we don't, so.
That's the problem.
Alright.
We will work on it, that's all I can say right now.
Thank you, Mr. DeFon. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to say? Alright, we will, we will move on. Public hearing is still open. All are public hearings. Each board member by now should have received the eight twenty, twenty-five meeting minutes for review. I saw no issues with them. Anybody have any issues? If not, I'll take a motion that they become record.
I move that we approved the minutes from last month's meeting.
So moved by Mr. Widdick.
I'll second.
So, seconded by Mr. Adseth, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. At this time, we will take the financial report from Mr. Trillion. All the bills have been audited, and Gina's absence I was, I pitched it, so they've been audited by two people, and I believe Gina is on via Skype, she's in Florida. Okay.
Okay, our gas fund, charges amount $103,907.24. Our water fund, $120,248.82. Sewer fund, $401,00252.73. And our capital fund, $528,490.68. Either I can or Dan explain the capital and sewer fund why they're so high? Well, we had a couple bond names, too, right?
And we closed the sewer plan.
Right, right. So they were pretty happy bills that we had to pay.
You wanna move to?
And I moved, and we pay them.
I will second. I audit them, I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carried. Unfinished business. Recreation program, last week, I believe it was, this, I don't see, a lot of, myself, Gina, Mr. Mullin, Mr. Adseth, Mr. Dinesh, oh no, I'm sorry, not Tony, Wendy, met to discuss that, and next Tuesday, we are going to meet with Mr. Primo, the following people, myself, I'm gonna ask Mr. Trillion to go, and Mr. Mullin's going, Mr. Ross is going, and they're gonna explain how they run their summer rent program at South Louis, it's pretty interesting, and so next Tuesday, we will be meeting with him. Laba Heights and Louis Apartments, we have approved.
I think, I think Gina wanted to speak.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Gina.
She's muted.
She's muted?
She muted herself.
No, no, no. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So we need to make a motion to finish the contract, make the last payment to double play?
We don't need a motion, it's already in, it's in here.
Oh, Gina, you know, are you gonna be back for that meeting next Tuesday?
No, I already spoke to somebody, they're going to let me know about the meeting, I'm sorry, I'm not able to make the meeting on Tuesday.
That's fine, that's fine. That's why I asked Mr. Trillion, but if you said you were gonna be.
The village, the village, the town is going to reimburse us for some of the money that was spent, their portion?
Yes.
For the rent program, is that in the minutes?
And it, I will, if you wanna say, I'll add it here.
You wanna make a motion, Gina?
Yes, yes, so I make a motion that the, I spoke with the town, and they're going to be reimbursing us $16,000. So we have to get a motion for that, I guess.
Okay, so. I don't think.
Is it 16 or is it 18? Oh my God, this is.
I think it's 16 something, but we don't need a motion, I just wanna put it in the minutes on record, that they're gonna reimburse us.
We'll get some.
$16,800? Yeah, 16,8 something. I'll get the exact number.
Okay, thank you. And I'd like to have that documented, that they'll reimburse us within the 30 days to wrap up the rent program for last year.
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so, so moving along with Laba Heights, last month, we approved the paperwork for the acquisition of Laba Heights. We have been discussing the, the, the pilot.
Mm-hmm.
And, where did I put that, maybe I didn't bring it up. And anyways, a few questions that Mr. Mullin and I had as we're moving forward. Bob, I don't think there's gonna be a problem with the pilot, I don't think we're ready tonight to approve a pilot, per se, but go ahead if you wanna speak.
No, just to give you a brief update, we are progressing with architectural design, we're almost complete with that, and we'll be ready to pull the building permit shortly. The approvals with the state agency regarding all of the other funding sources are going along swimmingly, and we are excited to get started. That asset really needs some work. And Snowbelt and Tupusville Development are really excited to get it going with Louis Apartments and Laba Heights.
Can I ask, I forwarded the, my executive copy of that, but I asked for the one to your attorney's signs, and I haven't gotten that back. Can I get that?
Yep, I'll get the HDS, so we should be able to work back to you.
Bob, a few things today that Mr. Mullin and I discussed is, we raised a concern about the 95 percent tax valuation, because most of it right now is at 100, and we will be next year, and there's a few smaller schematics that I think he will discuss in the morning with it. Are you coming to town board meeting in the morning?
In the morning tomorrow, no, unfortunately, not.
Okay, but I would think that within the next 30 days, we're gonna be able to develop some kind of a pilot. We wanna make sure that we represent the taxpayers correctly, we wanna make sure that we, we are good stewards and good partners with the, with the Pro Housing Development, and so, we are going to move on this, and I would hope by, I don't know, later in November, like we said, we would have something in place.
Wonderful, wonderful, thank you, I just keep that in mind.
Alright.
Questions, so.
Is there any questions for?
Yeah, I'm here for any questions if you need me.
Okay, but thank you for the paperwork, I thought it was excellent.
Absolutely, thank you for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Planning and zoning contract, do we have any information from the town or from the attorneys on that yet?
I have heard nothing.
Okay.
I think Mr. Burrows has.
Yeah, I wrote to the board to provide some information on that matter.
To their board?
No, to the village board.
I might miss something.
I didn't see anything.
No, let me see. Yeah, August 26th, this is an attorney's last privileged letter.
To me?
I don't, nobody had seen this.
Yeah, it was to the mayor and the village trustees. We can make a copy, I'm sure you've got it, but yeah, that was sent out August 26th. Just input for the village board, as you're considering different aspects of that arrangement.
You sent it in an email, did you?
No, I, I, you double for, but this was a, this was a formal letter, this was following the last meeting, you asked for some input, so I did look at it. Thank you.
Door's locked.
I don't think I have a key.
I'm gonna take it away. I did not see that, so.
But, I won't, I won't put in the details of the letter, because it's privileged, but all it does is touches upon the agreement between the village and the town, and there were a few different issues that had come up, that you were looking for a little bit of input, so provided input on that, and you can then review it, go from there.
Okay, well, I didn't see it, so I apologize.
Look, we'll have to make sure that trustee Judd also gets a copy.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll get one of them. Then, that next D, we move that to new business. So you can skip that one.
Okay.
So, just, just so you know, I did attend the town meeting, and I brought that up at the town meeting, the planning zoning contract. At that time, what's her attorney's name?
Ray.
Ray, Ray said that he did get it, but it got lost in his paperwork, so he hadn't done any of that. So that's what they were at last month, I don't know where they're at now.
Okay, seven D is gonna be moved to new business, so let's go to new business, and we'll do that first. That's the repeal, correct me if I'm wrong, that's the repeal, the violation of penalties for zoning.
Zoning. So, so what happens is this, the zoning law that the village has in place exposes a violator to the possibility of a misdemeanor, a crime. And, and that's a big deal, obviously, because if someone is convicted of what I'll refer as a simple zoning violation, hit a criminal record. The second thing that's important is, is if you prosecute someone for a violation of the zoning law, if it's a simple violation, it's a fine that the person will be faced with, and the goal is compliance. But the, the law that you have in place actually opens the door that could be given jail time. Now, typically, a justice court does not incarcerate someone for a zoning offense. So all this does is, is the proposed change strips out the misdemeanor provisions, so that if someone is charged with an offense, and if they're convicted, they're faced with a fine, up to the maximum fine that's available for violation, and it also codifies that each week could potentially be a separate violation, okay? So if they're violated on Monday, they aren't charged on Tuesday, but the following week, they could potentially be charged again. But the real key is, it's a fine issue, because the goal that the village board has, as I understand, is we want compliance. So without worrying, Jim, do they actually have to be charged again? No, 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 they do not have to. That's, that's considered prosecutorial discretion, and the county actually administers it, but no, they're not required to charge every single week, they can't. And that's usually, it usually encourages somebody, if he or she knows they're in a violation, it usually encourages them to, to take the step to comply. And that's usually, it usually encourages somebody, if he or she knows they're in a violation, it usually encourages them to take the steps to comply. But it takes the possibility of jail time out, takes the possibility of criminal record out, takes the possibility of having a jury trial for a simple zoning offense out. It just streamlines the process.
What we're trying to do in essence is we're not looking to crack the whip, we're looking for compliance, so we've softened the penalty because we thought they're garys. So that being said, we're gonna need to set a public hearing for that, aren't we?
Yeah, the most that the board, we discussed it briefly last month, the most the board might do is set a public hearing for your next available meeting in October. But other than that, at that meeting, it's a very simple, straightforward, it's a local law. If the board was required, you could adopt it after the public hearing and move there on.
So we could set a public hearing for that on October fifteenth at four o'clock. So you'll have it ready so that we can, you have that ready?
I have that.
Motion for that public hearing? So I'm gonna put Mr. Trillian.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Adseth, all in favor?
Aye.
All. On the agenda, you will see on the new business Dollar Tree. There's a lot of speculation going through the community as to why Dollar Tree is leaving us supposedly. One of the statements or rumors that have been made is that the village and/or town won't let them rebuild or build a place. We have seen no application. That would be the first step. And our response to that would be, as long as it meets the resident, the code for that area that they wanted to build, that we would have no problem. I have tried to reach out to management and the local management and gave them my card. They, and they didn't get back to me. And my feeling is, people have to understand that when business decisions are made, villages usually aren't going to be able to change them one way or another. If there's a dispute between tenant and landlord or what have you, that those are corporate decisions. So we certainly would do anything we could to keep Dollar Tree, to assist them. But like I said, if they're looking to build, the first step would be an application, which we haven't seen. So in fairness to the village and the town, I believe that we're here to do whatever we can to any industry or any retail business that can, that we can accommodate. Certainly, a Dollar Tree store is very simple to accommodate, so they don't require very few services. Little water and other than that, you know, police protection if it's needed, which we have. But I wanted to set that as straight as I could from our perspective. Okay, moving forward, we have the timber bid that Mr. Dinesh supplied with us for the harvest of our property. And it looks like the high bid comes from Line Decker Timber Harvesting. We had four bids, Maiden Logging, Line Decker Timber, Three B Timber, and MJ Line Decker. The high bid was ninety-four thousand six hundred nineteen with the low bid coming in at fifty-one thousand nine twenty. So at this point, I would ask Paul if he's got anything that he wants to say or what his recommendation would be. We don't have to take the high bid, but if all things being equal, certainly we would. But I don't know if he's got any.
No, just with the proposal that we had, that Prentice and Carlisle, who is our agent for the timber bid, they're gonna do fifty-eight acres. Prentice and Carlisle has done a great job, they've got it planned out for the next five years of timber harvesting. No, that's about it.
So you wanna make a recommendation?
I would make a recommendation, I would go with David Line Decker Timber Harvesting.
Motion.
I'll make a motion, we go with that.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All, carried.
When is this gonna happen?
They were hoping to do it this fall, but he is working downstate or something like that, so possibly this fall, early spring.
That's fifty-eight acres of how many acres are there? Or is that the whole property?
No, there's fifteen hundred acres. A lot.
You got something, Nick? You look kinda questioning what they were going over. No, you looked like you had a question on your face when Paul was saying it. You look kinda confused. Do you have a question about what we're talking about? Because you had like a confused look on your face.
No, I, it pertains to the question I asked in the public comment, but at the end of the meeting, it's just a, it wasn't what you're talking about, no. It just occurred to me. I was thinking about something else and was looking for an answer.
So we haven't done a timber sale in four years, I believe. So I'd like to get on the schedule, we have, talking with Prentice and Carlisle, we have a lot of acreage up there that needs to be cut so we can get more growth, and if we don't cut it, it's just gonna rot, so.
That pause will cap a little future plan. I thought Matt was gonna be here to talk about the.
I thought he was too, but I can give a little synopsis of it.
Go ahead.
So I don't think we put it in there. The municipal board recommended that we spend another ten thousand five hundred dollars towards wells. The test wells that they've done right now, they have gone deeper than what the last two wells at were. So they based the sieve sizes. There's different levels, there's different types of material as you go down. So they were Jay Burrow, or Jay Billings. When he did test well one and two that are up and running right now, I don't know the exact footage, but these wells have gone deeper. So with a deeper well, you need more screens to put into the well to determine what you have. So we have a proposal, which I haven't received yet, but it's ten thousand five hundred dollars for additional screens. But everything, everything looks good, and they actually look like they're gonna be better wells than what we have right now. I guess I'd make a motion to spend the ten thousand five hundred dollars for the additional screens.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All.
I have a question on the wells.
Yeah.
It's pretty dry out there right now, has that affected them at all?
They are producing just as good as they do in the winter time, so.
We asked that question in the municipal board meeting, no?
Yeah, did you, you were there, did you have anything else to say?
No, not really.
But they're very impressed with the drilling, the water that's coming out of them. So looks like it was a great spot to put two wells.
Is that it for that?
I'll benefit the village.
And you'll see in the new business, not much to talk about with craft surcharges, there are none, so. And I would, at this point in time, take a motion to appoint David Gibber to our recreation committee for a term ending on five thirty-one twenty-seven.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Adseth? I'll second it. I was wanting to ask him, so I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
All. Motion carried. He'll come in and sign the office. We're gonna get that committee back up and running the way it should here very, very shortly. There's a lot of talk and moving forward, we wanna figure out how we can make that summer rec program whole for everybody. But everybody has to have some stock in it, the village and the town cannot continue to subsidize everybody else. But we wanna see a summer rec program for the children in our area. And Gina's been working very hard and JD Ross. And so we will be moving forward with that.
And is anyone talking about craft? Well, Friday?
Yeah, Friday. I don't know that we can call it craft anymore, but Friday, we are going to have the corporate representatives here. And myself, Mr. Trillian, and Mr. Dinesh will be at the meeting. They're gonna be here all weekend, they will be attending the meeting, and Tim Huck.
When's the meeting?
Friday morning. And it's not necessarily open to the public, it's not a public meeting, that's why we're not taking the majority of our board. But they're gonna be here, and Tim Huck thought that it would be nice, and I agree with him, that we be able to put names and faces. So we will, we will attend that meeting Friday morning, at ten AM. We have got a concern, this is F, on the agenda. There's been some concerns about people parking where the lion's clock is in our corner parking lot all day. We have many, many spaces behind the vacant that are accessible. And we feel that the two-hour parking should be there for clients, customers, and what have you that are going downstreet. They're gonna spend two hours downstreet. So I'm raising this issue because it was brought to my attention. I think that it would be a good idea to change that to two-hour parking. I really haven't had a chance to discuss it much with the board, but I think this needs to happen sooner than later because it apparently is an issue. I don't know if there's any thought, if we wanna look deeper, or if we wanna move forward and have a public hearing and get that underway. Any thoughts from our board on that? Where, my feeling is, those parking spaces are for our customers, our constituents, with fairness to others. So if not, I'd like to set up a public hearing for next month on that. I would accept a motion.
I'll make a motion, we set up a public hearing for that.
I'll second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All. All these public hearings, by the way, will be at four o'clock. I'd like to go back to the other two public hearings and see if we have any comments on those. If not, we're gonna close up those two public hearings.
We're not done with your closing stuff.
No, I know we're not, I wanna close them before I forget not.
Okay.
Just gotta remember, I'm not a young man anymore. Okay, being that there's no comments, I'll take a motion on resolution number sixteen, public hearing, repeal and replace chapter seventy-seven four dash, seventy-seven dash four G.
I'll make a motion to close that.
Mr. Adseth? Mr. Whitaker, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll take a motion to put that into law.
I will make that motion as well.
Mr. Adseth?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All, carried. Resolution number seventeen, repeal and replace chapter seventy-seven dash five, B and C. A motion to close that public hearing.
I'll move.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
All, carried.
Who's second?
I did the second. I will take a motion to place that into law.
I'll move again.
Mr. Trillian?
I'll second it.
Mr. Adseth, all in favor?
Aye.
All, motion is carried.
You filed a local law?
Yes.
I'm just gonna copy.
Perfect. Clerk? Clerk Snowden has applied, supplied us with a simple budget red amendment to move some funds from A and S one nine nine zero dash four and eight eight five four zero dash four six. The first portion's about five hundred twenty-five dollars, and the second portion, the first one is contingency count, and the other one is drainage operation maintenance of nineteen thousand. Move to drainage pro tax serve for nineteen thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars. I'll take a motion to move those funds.
I'll move.
Motion by Mr. Trillian.
I'll second it.
Mr. Adseth, all in favor?
Aye.
All, carried.
Now we have the Parkway, okay.
In the summer months, from around April first, or April thirtieth, I guess it doesn't really matter so much to beginning or the end, we are finding that we have a lot of people playing pickleball in the morning. And over at Parkway, for those people, there may not be parking. So from, I would like to say April thirtieth to October thirtieth, during those months, we have two-hour parking, other than that, there really seems to be no issue. But I think that, again, pickleball is really, really picking up steam. Matter of fact, a few days ago, somebody came in while I was here and asked if we had pickleball courts, and Wendy directed them to where they were, so. And it seems like even the kids are picking up and playing it, so. I think that, again, that's a park that we wanna be able to use. We, during those summer months, we don't want people parking there all day.
Are you talking the whole area there, or just in front of the courts?
Well, for right now, we can do the whole area, and I talked with Mr. Burrows and retract it. That way, we can, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Burrows, we can, we can play with it after the fact, but it'll be easier just to retract it than to retract, to redo the law.
Well, yeah, what you've got is just a draft right now, between the two signs, you're first. Yeah, you could track it and.
I would like, I would like to make the law for the whole thing, so that we can, at that point in time, if we wanna decrease it, we certainly can. And that way, we don't have to redraft the law. I don't, Tim, I don't think we're gonna heat it off, but that was the intent. I do know, unless I'm incorrect, Mr. North's here.
If you make it for it all, then it's all gonna be two-hour parking, right?
No, we can, we can, we can subtract it with the signs.
Yeah, so the last two months, the topic came up generally, and my understanding from last month's meeting was was that the board was looking to possibly change the parking there. And it would be that one street, two-hour parking between two signs. And that gives you the discretion, you get docked by local law, you can expand or contract wherever you put those signs. But that would be up to you in working with.
And that's, that's what I think, it makes it simple.
It makes sense to me to put two-hour parking in front of where the pickleball courts are or whatever. But it doesn't, makes no sense to me at all to put it to rest of.
Well, I think that was our original thought was to do it in front of the pickleball courts. Until the completion of the DRI, whatever was gonna happen at Veterans Park, and then we were going to figure out how many spots we needed.
Yeah, and going back to what I'm saying, we certainly can create the law, but put the signs like that, and then we don't even have to revisit it. We can leave it as is, and maybe we never expand it. That's the way I was.
So what you're saying is put the signs where the pickleball courts are now?
And we can expand or detract it any day of the week if we want, depending on what's going on.
But so that's just, you've got the draft now, the most that would happen this evening is, if the majority of the board were inclined, you'd set a public hearing for next month. And then if you want additional fine tuning, just let me know, I can change it, but at least it gets you, you know, off the mark so you can begin the process of discussing to what extent, if any, you wanna dock.
So you're saying we could say two-hour parking for that area, but we could only put up four signs if we wanted to, four spots or whatever.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it could be as broad or as narrow as you'd like it, you're the legislative body.
And what I was thinking, Tim, is we have a nice dream of having a splash pad, if we get that, you'll probably go to want more four parking spaces at that point. And I'm saying, we wouldn't have to file a law again and have it redrafted in the attorney's. So that was my thought, so why don't we set a public hearing if nobody disagrees, and we can, then we can put the signs.
Can I just ask, you got both sides of the road here, can we be a little more specific?
Now, that was me because I wasn't sure what you're looking for, so one of the many areas of Wendy's corrected.
I don't think.
I'm second, you'll put one side.
Just one side?
Yeah.
There's only public parking on one side.
So, let's revisit that. So if the DRI goes through and we have parking on both sides, so there would be from the one, one proposal with the DRI that was approved, it would be on the hair salon side, there'll be an island, there'll be parking there, so you will have, you will have both sides.
Good point, so let's leave it.
I would leave it.
Yep.
And like, like Jim said, we can modify it. And like, like Jim said, we can modify it. You know, if Veterans Park happens, we can have...
But it's there.
Maybe four spots there and four spots there.
See, right, yeah, I did include that. Okay, motion to set a public hearing for the 15th at four o'clock.
I'll make that work.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Carried. Mr. Dietrich, you're...
Aye. So our next RACAG board meeting is September 25th, six o'clock at the Town of Willoughby. Uh, we'll have Ryan Pachet, the Jefferson County Administrator, will be there along with Tim Hunt, Lewis County Manager, will be there giving updates for both counties. Uh, we have our Tugel Commission Annual Dinner Meeting is October 9th and that'll be at the Delta Lake Inn. I know one of the presenters will be the Deputy Commissioner for Ag and Markets. Also, some representatives from Chivani will be there. And so anybody who's interested in that, I believe some invites have gone out or you might have received some for that.
You have a restaurant near the dam site?
Yeah, it's right near the dam.
That's a great place.
Yeah, yeah. And so we are gonna, we're starting our planning for the Economic Visioning Summit. This Friday, we'll have our first meeting on that. And that will be on March 19th at the Howard G. Sackett Technical Center. Uh, the RACAG, uh, what we call the Youth Committee now will be starting to meet in October. We're gonna have a meeting then. And the idea with that is, again, there'll be more like a youth think tank for the RACAG communities if they have projects and things like that that they wanna get some youth input on, they'll be available for that. Uh, related to that, we have the Civic Service Student Activity Program starting up too in October. So here in early October, we're meeting with the Guidance Counselors at Bosse's to go and talk about the program and see about, you know, what students might wanna sign up for that. And the first day for that will be October 23rd is the Classroom Day and May 21st will be the Field Trip Day, which we may end up hitting Town of Willoughby again 'cause their meeting's in the mornings. So, got your board meeting. But we are changing around the program, so it'll be a little bit different. So students that attended last year, if they wanna attend again this year, it'll be kind of a little bit different. Things taking place in different locations for the field trip. And then, and again, RACAG is covering the lunches for that. They're sponsoring the lunches for the students on that. And then the wastewater operator training, I'm just waiting to hear back. I'm just waiting for the questions of whether the internships, that they're looking for communities to be a location for, if their communities have to pay for the interns or if that's just kinda, kinda be included in the program. So that's what I'm kinda waiting for. They're waiting till they get their instructor hired. And then I'll, I'll get a little bit more information on that. The Associate Circuit Riders, so we do have three right now, but we, we just got Mackenzie Judd is back. So she's now one of the associates again, but I am losing Sarah, who was the associate for a couple of months. So I gained one and lost one, but, um, so we'll be trying to fill in. But I told him that his, his spot, you know, we'll hold that form for the couple of months to see if he comes back this way or not. Otherwise, we might be looking for another associate. We are looking at, at the RACAG Board Meeting. We're gonna have a proposal together for a strategic plan for RACAG and we're gonna be looking at applying for funds through Naturally Lewis for that. So we'll have kind of a draft proposal put together for the board to look at at that meeting. And other than that, that's pretty much what I have unless you have any other... Oh, I will just mention one thing. The Tugel Commission is offering to schools up this area. They've done it for Oneida County in the past, but for our Local Government Conference that takes place in Turning Stone. They're offering it to any school up here that might be interested in sending five students and one or two chaperones to go attend the conference and then we cover the registration for those, for those people attending there. So I had, I just sent an email out to all the school districts letting them know about that 'cause it's a first come, first served. Whatever school district says yes, uh, they're the ones that will be the ones to take advantage of that. So before it was mostly Oneida County, schools just 'cause of the location to Turning Stone. I said, well, let's see if we have any schools up here that are interested, so that's all I got.
And I wanna thank Mickey for setting up the Zoom conference for us.
Yep, no problem.
Okay. Moving on to Officers and Committee Reports. First is Mr. Burl.
Nothing to add, Mayor.
Okay, I have a couple of things. On the same night that you have your meeting, that I was going to attend, Mickey, we have a Supervisors' Meeting, uh, on the 25th. Mayors and Supervisors, and that will be open to just Mayors and Supervisors and a minimum of each board. And we're going to discuss EMS in the county. And we're also going to discuss the law, the, the law for the villages and towns to opt in and the new resolution and what could be the repercussions of that. And I don't know that anything else will be discussed at that meeting, but those are the two topics. We also have in Wendy's possession, the audit for the Fire Department. If anybody on the board wishes to look at it, it's here. I've reviewed it and I find it in very good standing. I think the Fire Department's doing a great job. They could use some volunteers. So anybody out there that wants to volunteer, please fill out an application because it used to be we had the AD members. We, we don't anymore. We used to have a waiting list and we don't anymore. And that's becoming an issue everywhere, so we're still in pretty good shape, I would say, Joe, unless you wanna, but we certainly would take some qualified volunteers. With that being said, I have nothing more. Wendy, oh, yes, I do. I request an executive session to discuss personnel issue. Go ahead, Wendy.
Treasures reports in your packet.
Yep, that's it.
That's it.
Mr. Ortlet, Chief Ortlet.
Um, I emailed the monthly report. Can I just chime in on the parking stuff?
Absolutely.
I, I just feel like we should be cautious on turning so much parking over to two-hour. 'Cause where are we gonna put them? I mean, it, it, I can tell you that most of the parking tickets that we write in the Lions corridor, the Lions Park block, you'd say, is business owners or their employees. If we stuff everybody down behind the Bateman, there's not gonna be room. Um, and, and I know most of the, the vehicles that are in, 'cause I, I see it, I watch them every day, in that Lions parking lot are business owners or employees of a medical center or surrounding businesses. We just, I, and I know it shouldn't be our problem to find parking for them, but it, we're, we're not gonna have time to police it all.
And I get that. And I guess my remark is, anybody who understands that they're taking a chance, my, my thought, Darrell, on, on the parking in Lions is there's not that many spaces to begin with. So maybe, maybe I'm missing a boat. I don't know that, I think we've got a lot of spaces back there. And I believe, unless I'm wrong, Mr. North is here, the county is going to possibly have quite a few parking spaces here in the very near future.
That's all I'm worried, you know?
It's all on hold. See, I heard today that it wasn't, so...
I know, as far as I know, they're waiting and talking to the ID, maybe some other, some other issues.
Okay. Well, we've scheduled a public hearing. I think at that point in time, we can, we can discuss that further.
Well, question on that, I mean, same, same thing as the Veterans Park. Can we regulate so many spaces, two-hour parking and leave the rest of them open?
That's why we can shrink it, yeah.
You know, I mean, not do the whole thing.
Yep.
Yeah, and we definitely can't do the whole thing. I...
And that, that certainly, by, by creating the law that way, we don't have to redact it or, or place it. If, if we do the whole thing, right, and we don't have to pay fees.
Maybe just a few, two-hour and the rest is open and see how that goes.
We've all went through there. I mean, you see how packed it is. And depending on what happens with the hair salon property area, what are you gonna do? Where are you gonna put these people? I mean, I know Joe's, he's getting bombarded. They're, they're starting to throw in the fire, I don't know.
Well, there's certainly not going to, to, to block. And, and my theory on parking in the village is based on what we have. It's on a first come, first served basis, based on the laws. And the parking spaces here are earmarked for whoever gets them, based on the law. And, yeah, we probably, Darrell, I, I hear you, we probably have to, to look at that and tweak it. There's concerns raised by some businesses and I don't wanna get into who they were because that might be adversarial to them that wanted to see that, what it was. And I, and I thought, I thought today would...
I think we should take his consideration.
Absolutely.
You know what I'm saying? Because he's the one looking at it all the time too.
He's, he's getting no...
When we do get to that point...
One of the things Darrell and I have discussed is we've got maybe two or three people, uh, constituents, non constituents, that seem to think that they're going to mock the parking rules in this community. And that's not fair to you that wanna to, to handle straight. And I hate to throw another thing out there, but I'm thinking if you get so many parking tickets within, tickets within a certain period of time, if we put something in the law, parking tickets, they can look at, they can get thrown out, they're not much. But a towing bill really sends a message. Tim, I don't wanna steer your thunder, but you told me you were getting towed once when you were up in Maine, right?
Yeah, I was, yeah.
And then the towing guy, he said he'd take the money if...
That was a little shady deal there, but yeah. He had it on the truck. I caught him when I was coming out the door.
And we're, we're not gonna do that, but we did, we did execute a towing a couple of weeks ago.
But again, that was my fault 'cause the sign was right there. I just didn't see it.
I know.
If, if the parking, uh, penalty, I don't wanna say penalty, but the penalty had more teeth to it, it would definitely help. Without getting into it too.
You mean, uh, $25 needs to be changed?
Well, it's not even the $25. You don't wanna kill them with parking ticket. It's just, right now, if, if the court has the, the, the option to what we call scoff law, a parking ticket, so which that means that they can report to DMV, this person didn't show up for the ticket. But that, that only happened and Mr. Phone probably can give more details of that. He, the village court used to do that. We're not getting so much of that with, now that we don't have a village court and we're using the town court. So it's not getting scoff law. Though, they do have the option of scoff law in which that means that it basically, they could suspend their license if they didn't answer it. Just like if you didn't answer a seatbelt ticket or a speeding ticket. And so, so if, if we had something with a little bit more teeth in, in, in our local law for parking tickets, I think we'd get a lot easier compliance.
Well, there's, the scoff laws in there, right? I mean, if they don't, if the judge doesn't wanna turn it over, there's nothing we can do, correct?
Right.
So that, that's a discussion, I don't know, you have to be careful how you, to approach that with a judge because it's, it's their option, but...
I've never spoke to the judges personally about it. I, I spoke to the clerk about it and stuff before, but it might be something that we should talk about, bow and, and just get together and see before we go through and change the whole local law stuff. The teeth are there, we just need to utilize them.
There's a lot of teeth in a lot of laws that we're not utilizing that would, would, I think, help. It's not fair to the people that obey things. That's, that's my...
There's only a couple. I mean, there's not, it's not, there's not, there's not a lift by any means.
No.
You know, I've gone through it before. There's one, maybe two.
Yeah, they think they're privileged.
Yeah, and it's frustrating, for sure.
And they take, and they're healthy, they're healthy men. They can walk. And then when I get somebody...
They're not all men. Not all men.
Well, there's some women too. And, but then you have some lady that wants to go into somebody's office, the courthouse or where I work, with a walker and she can't get a parking space. To me, I think that's, if I was one of those, that's embarrassing. But I don't, that's, that's...
Um, we went to range on the 9th on the entire department and I was very happy on how everyone performed and qualified. So we are qualified for one more year. And then East State Street Bridge, if you hadn't heard, they just announced it today. Um, it's gonna be closed Monday and the timeline is one to two weeks for resurfacing, so prepare for that.
The, the whole bridge?
The whole bridge.
One lane at all? Not one lane?
The whole, closed.
Why does it take two weeks to resurface?
'Cause they're pulling the blacktop off and repairing the concrete deck underneath.
Is it, is it bad shape for me?
So they're gonna just detour somewhere or...
I'm not sure.
They're putting them up, uh, at, uh, this side of DMV so you can still get inside entrance, 'cause I was just, I was at the meeting yesterday. And then Water Street.
Mr. Austin, were you aware of that?
I was not.
Now you are.
I just found out, I just found out yesterday, so...
I don't usually utilize that very often unless it's down into that area.
Yes. Used River Street or Jackson's.
You're on a need-to-know basis and I don't guess you didn't need to know. Should they...
Water's rolling, you still get there.
Yeah, yeah, they're gonna stop at Water Street.
Yep, what's that gonna do? Tractor trailers that go up through there all day long?
Thank God it's Monday and not now for the Cream Cheese Festival on Saturday 'cause I don't know what would happen. We, that, we'd have to...
They're not gonna put a sign down, way down by the county bar?
Oh, it's not till Monday, so Cream Cheese isn't till...
No, no, but I mean, I already...
Oh, I, I don't know what the county's doing.
I'm hoping Mr. Austin, I'm hoping he'll put something up. Apparently you weren't aware of it yet either.
We just got it about five minutes before I walked out the door, so...
Okay. Well, you got it.
We knew what was gonna happen or I knew what was gonna happen, but I didn't know...
Didn't know what.
Which is fine, but I mean, what I'm saying is, boy, the tractor trailers go by my house all day long, every day.
You don't get a break.
I'm sure John's got a plan.
Yeah. Okay, I'm just asking.
John wasn't there at the meeting yesterday. I was the deputy, so...
Mr... Go ahead. Are you done?
Yes.
Mr. Dees.
Okay, so October 6th, we will start with our fall cleanup. Um, just a reminder, residents, um, that all piles of limbs, debris, leaves, brush, et cetera, to be picked up at the curb must be kept individually sorted. All piles will, um, all piles found to be mixed together will not be picked up by the village crews. Please note that only reasonable-sized brush piles will be picked up by the village crews. Large piles resulting from tree removals, shrubbery, hedge, hedgerows are the responsible, responsibility of the property owner. Residents should make private arrangements for that. Let's see, the department would also like to additionally remind residents that it is illegal to put your brush piles, limbs, debris, uh, leaves beyond the curb in the street. That's about all I got.
Okay. Too bad we have to repeat that every day.
Most people are doing a good job.
They are. They are. I, I've been using the, I've been going down to the transfer station or whatever we wanna call it, and I would say that people are doing a pretty nice job of complying with that and putting stuff where it used to be.
They are.
Now, I watched one person dump wood that they shouldn't, with wood that they should, and they were piling it back into their vehicle as I was pulling it, so it wasn't...
And I will let the residents know that we have a new security system down there where I can look at 24/7. It, it notices when a vehicle comes in, records it. I get their license plate, everything. So if you're illegally dumping, Mr. Ortlet will come see you.
Somebody's coming, wait them. Someone's coming.
She's still there.
Capital Future Planning. Paul, Paul's, timber harvesting is kind of a start to what we need to do. We need to start on that. Personnel, contracts you've been working on or any of some input?
Started working on both of them, yes, DPW and Blue.
And then we have an executive, an executive meeting concerning personnel. Finance, anything to report?
No.
Fire Department, Mr. Adsett or Mr. Austin, anything to report? I know we've got a new member we need to reinstate from exempt to new.
Yeah, you want exempt and now exempt, so...
We don't need to do anything on that.
Just vote, approve, approve him as a member.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve Mike Van Brockham to go from exempt back to a regular member.
I'll second that.
They find a fire that creates...
Opposed? Motion carried. You got anything else, Mr.?
Uh, I just wanna mention the Cream Cheese Festival. We're also from the Fire Department side.
Must have been possible, I would have scolded him.
Yeah. I would like to mention though that we are going to have, we're gonna have a table set up there. We're not doing any food like we normally... a table set up there, we're not doing any food like we normally do just because of cost this year, um, but we are going to have a table there to hopefully as a sort of a recruitment table, but we also have a Yeti cooler that was donated to us from the farmers' co-op that we're going to be raffling off. I don't have the exact price, but I'm pretty sure it's the $275 cooler, so it was a very good donation from the co-op, so I just appreciate them for that and we'll be raffling that off at the cream cheese festival, so.
Is that it?
That's it.
Please, department. Department, you know, so, planning board, TBA.
Um, gentlemen, at the, uh, planning board meeting, last week, I don't believe there was anything we needed to report on.
Okay, municipal board.
I think the biggest thing that we covered on the municipal board was, uh, timber harvest.
And the walls.
Town, and, uh, Mr. Wedrick and myself attended the last meeting, so the gentleman and the soulman was there. County.
I did attend, there was nothing involving the village to report.
I think we talked enough about recreation, I don't think there's probably anything more we need to talk about with Rayco. Um, is there anything else anybody wants to bring in front of this board? I see we have a face here that I normally don't see. Is there something you wanted to bring up, Ms. Taylor?
Well, I, I missed the resolution stuff in the beginning of the hearing, a leash law, that's what I came for.
Do you understand what we're doing?
Um, I, my question, my, I guess my question is how are you going to report, but same way you went, and of course, the dog poops the flock?
Yes. What we're hoping, what we're hoping is...
I walk, I don't sound...
You're, you're not, you, you, we would preach to the choir to you because you're good, what you, you, you...
But I mean, I, I, they don't, I walk my dog twice a day, every day, and I, I scoop every day, um, and I walk by an awful lot of poop that's not scooped. So, my question is, I, why isn't, you know, I'm a country, I get scooped in my own yard.
It's, it's, I think how the appearance, do you want to answer that, Darryl? It's another thing where you got to counter the act.
Looking for it unless we get a complaint out, then we would act and...
Is that the same with the leash law, I think?
Um, no, not necessarily that, I don't think so, because that's kind of, that's, could be a dangerous act. I mean, the poop thing's not really a dangerous act. I mean, if, if we see a dog, you know, bolting down the sidewalk and there's no leash on it, we're going to act. I mean, it's kind of tit for tat.
I usually don't let the leash my big dog, because he'll bite you, but...
I would say as long as it doesn't get loose and bite somebody, you're going to be all right, but the law is there to protect the village and to...
But then like, the dog control officer, I get my, pull my dog tacked in my own yard if I, uh, unregistered, unlicensed and unvaccinated dog and without control, but nothing. On the leash. So, I just wonder how, how you're going to...
That, that, that's a whole other, can be a whole other concern, certainly. I can tell you that there's been some serious dog bites within the county. I don't know if you were here last month when a dog officer from another community was here up at Krogan Denmark Way. We've, we've had them in the past that have been serious, we haven't had them recently, but you never know when it's going to happen. And, uh, even the toughest laws are, and I don't think our laws are that tough, I think they're, they're reasonable and I would hope that it's, it's the unreasonable or unresponsible people that cause the problems with, with dogs. I mean, when you've got dogs that are, that attack and like that, that's, that's an issue. And I think there, there's dogs out there that attack. There's no choice around it. With, uh, is there anybody else? Did you have something more to mention?
Oh, yeah, uh, it goes back to the question I asked, uh, earlier. I got kind of sidetracked with a little off conversation. Uh, the question was, is the board looking at a committee or something to look at these new, uh, green energy projects that are kind of coming into the village now and around the village that, uh, kind of, have kind of hit us. I know there's thermal energy one, I don't think anybody in the village has thought of that except Dr. Lineker, who that I can think of coming in with it. So, that was my question, is, is it, have you got a committee now that that's in the village, uh, to look at something or what?
That's a fair question and I can't say that we have a committee at this point in time. Um, I know that there's other communities that are passing the moratorium on, on solar panels. Um, you know, in, in the village, I don't know other than a couple of spots that that could even happen anymore because we're pretty much landlocked. I can think of some property up on Campbell that maybe it could happen. And, uh, there's a few acres behind, behind James Street that's still open, but other than that, but, you know, I would entertain us doing something like that, we probably should, especially with the battery storage.
But we've already, correct me if I'm wrong, we've already passed legislation about, uh, solar panels in the village.
Yeah, we have. The only thing to have is solar panels that I can... Yeah.
Yeah.
We don't have anything on geothermal or anything like that.
So, real, real quick, so what happens with zoning, land use regulations and, and the rule 100 years ago was a man's home is his castle, but that hasn't been the rule in a long time, so a village board legislative body does have the ability within certain constraints to impose land use regulations. Land use regulations though, since they take away rights from a property owner, they're strictly interpreted, strictly construed in order to do so. Now, it, it with geothermal, since there's nothing on the books right now, that would mean that a property owner, he or she could pursue geothermal technically, unless there's a moratorium. Um, if, if you adopt something that restricts geothermal, then that would be prospective, it would impact it. Now, good, bad or otherwise, that does not mean that if somebody puts in geothermal that, that they can, um, damage somebody else's property. So, so as a practical matter, whether you've got zoning or, or whether you don't have zoning on geothermal, if, if I put geothermal in, in my property and it causes damage to a neighbor's property, and if it's a proximate cause, then, then I would be liable and, and you'd have a claim, a direct claim against me for doing that. So, and even if you have zoning and I follow the zoning, that doesn't mean that, that if I damage your property, I, I'm protected. It would not mean that at all. So, if, if you, if you have some, some questions about it, one thing you certainly could do in any event is document it. Um, I, I mean, I think that, you know, if, if you take a smartphone, videotape inside, outside your home, the foundation, just to make sure you know what the status is today, because it seems to me that, that, you know, geothermal, I don't know anymore, there might be risk when it's installed or secondly, when it's operational. Even if the village board doesn't ever adopt anything, though, if you documented it and, and you can demonstrate that that is a proximate cause, you'd have a direct claim against the neighbor.
Yeah, don't get me wrong, I got nothing against Dr. Dr. Lineker doing, as a matter of fact, when he did his whole backyard, I didn't have any problems with it, changing the layout of his land in the back, I didn't have any problems with that or this geothermal. It's just that now these new green energy ideas are coming out and it's, to me, it would seem, if the village put in against solar in the villages, that they ought to look at like what's going on with the, like the geothermal, uh, these pressurized tanks, uh, dealing with these new energy project, uh, projects.
That, that one that you mentioned, that the concentrated air energy storage systems, I'm familiar with that, I'm involved with that, and I represent a ton of program in it. And, and all that's happening there is, is this, there's one project in the nation out in California where, where, for lack of a better phrase, they have a concentrated air energy storage system, they drill in the ground allegedly far, far deeper than the, the aquifer and they use that as a natural storage tank. They, they, they put air, they pressurize air into the, the chasm that, that's created or formed or whatnot, and then above it, above the surface level, there will be a turbine. And then when the time calls, if, if the grid, uh, has a shortage of energy, pressurized air is released in the turbine, the turbine spins, produces electricity, it feeds in the grid. So, remarkably, in, in the north country, in Krogan, there's, there's discussion of, of that being an ideal site because the town today doesn't have legislation, theoretically someone could come in and they could put in one of these systems. The town board is, uh, does have a moratorium in place, they also are in the process of adopting legislation. That'll be the framework that would operate there, so they'll have something in place. And then, down the road, if there's an application, the application will be reviewed, processed, et cetera. But, but there too, because that's something so new, it does not mean that if, if, let's say if an applicant, developer comes into play, if it causes harm to somebody else, that doesn't mean that, that they're safe from it. And you can imagine with that, there's questions of what might it do to, to the aquifer and, and the noise and everything, so.
And these are just two examples of this new green energy ideas that are coming out and that people are trying to institute and all.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, motion to close this meeting and...
No.
Motion to go into executive session.
Motion to go to executive session.
Also move to...
I'll say it. Personnel, for personnel.
Who's second? Oh, I, I need...